If everyone would take their seat, we're going to get started in about one and a half minutes. Make an amendment to those, so try to make sure we can capture that. Councilmember Velpula, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's 6:05 PM on Tuesday, January the 9th, 2024. Happy New Year. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone that's here in our city council chambers, as well as our audience that's listening on channel WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching on cable channel 22.
Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach. Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
A notice was received by Councilmember Velpula of the city council. In accordance with the rules established in ordinance number 16142, Councilmember Velpula would be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to Councilmember Velpula's electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the city council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by Councilmember Velpula to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the city council, and the presiding officer shall declare Councilmember Velpula present. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Let the allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God in the physical with liberty and justice alone.
Madam Clerk?
We are at proclamations.
We have one proclamation, and it is the 22 Veteran Artist Vet Check. We have present with us Michael Reagan. I believe in Randolph Prunty. Gentlemen, if you would come to the mic, I'll read the proclamation and allow you to make comments following the reading. Whereas 22 VA was established to raise awareness of the fact that 22 veterans take their own lives every day, 22 VA also seeks to make an impact by connecting those in the community in need of support with art and horticultural therapy, both which make positive impacts on the lives of veterans. And whereas since its inception, the 22 VA organization has continued to expand outreach to raise awareness of veteran suicide, in addition to expanding opportunities for veterans. And whereas now in its 10th year, the annual 22 VA Art Exhibit at Peoria Public Library continues to serve veterans and educate the public. Expanded art exhibits are also on display in area VFW halls. And whereas all community members are encouraged to take advantage of the resources available from 22 VA and to practice the 22 VA Vet Check, on the 22nd of every month, please check on a veteran and let them know you're thinking about them. The 22 VA Vet Check is intended to provide support to the neighbors and community members who are veterans and to remind them that they are not alone. Now therefore I, Reed Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize 22 VA for their contributions and ask the public to participate in the 22 VA Vet Check in Peoria, Illinois dated this 9th day of January 2024.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple of things real quick. The 22nd of every month at noon, we do a plunge in the Illinois River. You don't have to wait for January 1st. We do it every month. And we also started up a PTSD group at Peoria Heights VFW. The 28th will be our next day doing that. You can check the Peoria Heights Facebook page for the VFW to learn more about it. But it's for all veterans and first responders. Eric, I see over there. So I want to make sure a lot of our police, fire department, they see some pretty horrible things, too. So it's something we all need to take care of mental health a little better. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan, Mr. Prunty. Thank you for your important and dedicated work. I did visit the art display in the lower level of the downtown Peoria Library. It's very heart-wrenching. It's very important. It's very beautiful as well. I encourage others to visit that display. It's very important. Thank you again for your work.
Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council and Town Board meeting held on December 12th, 2023, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Graham. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Velpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have one town item. 24-1 is a request from the town officials to approve the December 2023 actual expenditures and to approve the January 2024 anticipated expenditures for the town of the City of Peoria.
Trustee Graham?
I move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by trustee Jackson. Any discussion? Trustee Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just got a one request. I asked that a while ago, and I'm going to request it again. Every month, all 11 of us are asked to sign a document in the back room there about the budget. And all we see, or all I see, is really one payment. I've asked before. I'm going to ask again tonight. I'd love to see the budget, like what was the check this month, year-to-date, and what the budget is, basically. So when I sign the document, I know a little bit more what I'm signing. And I know we're on target with the budget. I know how much we spent so far. So I'm not sure. I don't think it would be too difficult of a request. But I'd love to see at least three columns so we can, I know a little bit more what I'm signing. Thank you.
Supervisor? Supervisor, can you respond to that? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, trustee Seer, for the question. So the question that you're asking for are the year-to-date. Now, those are updated once we end the month. There is some checks and balances that are set in place that we have to have done before we put that in there. What you're seeing before you and what we're asking approval on are the expense reports. But you would like to see what is done so far. You should be receiving those documents here soon. I believe, right now, we did have our bookkeeper that was out last week. So you should have an updated report this week, for sure, because she'll be in tomorrow. But those are two separate. So what you're asking for approval on is the expense reports. But what you're requesting is where are we at so far. Those, we don't have, you don't have to have approval on those. But we do provide that for you.
Yeah, it'd really be interesting to see the year-to-date and what the budget is for each line item, if it's possible.
Absolutely. In fact, I make sure that when you receive them, I receive them. So we get them at the same time. So you will be receiving them as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. It's with a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Trustee Vespa? No, I didn't mean Vespa. I'm sorry. Trustee Velpula?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Sorry about that. I used to do that between two other guys.
The Rs and the Bs. Okay, Madam Clerk?
We are at the city portion of the agenda, the consent agenda. 24-2 is a request from the city manager and the chief diversity and inclusion officer to approve the amendments to the Charter for the City-County Commission on Racial Justice Inequity. 24-3 is a communication with request to approve payment to PNC Bank for right-of-way acquisition and temporary easement of a portion of parcel 14-06-476-017 at 7901 North University Street for the proposed Pioneer Parkway and University Street Intersection Reconstruction Project in the amount of $62,200. 24-4 is a communication with request to approve payment to Park Place Real Estate LLC for a right-of-way acquisition and temporary easement of a portion of parcel 14-06-476-015 at 8001 North University Street for the proposed Pioneer Parkway and University Street Intersection Reconstruction Project in the amount of $64,700. 24-5 is a communication with request to approve payment to Pioneer Industrial Park, Inc. for right-of-way acquisition and temporary easement of a portion of parcel 14-08-101-002 and 14-08-101-003 at 7820 North University Street for the proposed Pioneer Parkway and University Street Intersection Reconstruction Project in the amount of $19,700. 24-6 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance correcting certain Scrivener's errors in the legal description of the South Village Tax Increment Financing District redevelopment plan and program. 24-7 is a communication with request for the following: A, adopt an ordinance authorizing the establishment of TIF-interested parties' registries, and adoption of registration rules for such registries for the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park TIF district; and B, adopt an ordinance to establish a date for a public hearing for the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park TIF district. 24-8 is a communication with request for the following: A, adopt an ordinance authorizing the establishment of TIF-interested parties' registries, and adoption of registration rules for such registries for the proposed Distillery TIF district; and B, adopt an ordinance to establish a date for a public hearing for the proposed Distillery TIF district. 24-9 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the East Village Growth Cell Advisory Committee with request to concur of Daniel Rennick. 24-10 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Historic Preservation Commission with a request to concur of John Wiggins Redman. 24-11 is a communication with request to receive and file the Springdale Cemetery Management Authority annual budget for 2024. And 24-12 is a request to approve the committee report policy session from the December 12th, 2023 city council meeting on violence prevention funding. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there items to remove from consent? Councilmember Kelly?
002, 009, 007, and 012, please.
You said 007, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I'm going to repeat those, make sure I have them. 24002, 24007, 24009, 24012.
Yes, thank you.
Correct? Okay. Any other items to remove? Can I get a motion to approve? Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any other questions? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Velpula?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-2 is a request from the city manager and the chief diversity and inclusion officer to approve the amendments to the Charter for the City-County Commission on Racial Justice and Equity.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions on the proposed changes. First of all, on page number one of the proposed changes document, "Vision," says the vision of the Joint Committee on Racial Justice and Equity is to end racism in city and county government.
That was in the original charter.
I understand. Is there racism in our city government? And if so, how do we measure that? Frankly, I don't know that there is. But is it truly the feeling of this commission that there is racism in our city government?
There was a full report. Actually, there was a lot of work that was done prior to the commission coming into existence that showed barriers to workforce barriers, systemic, historical barriers to sometimes employment, to entry into certain opportunities. There's been evidence of historical institutional racism, not just within the city government, but throughout institutions, whether they're educational, government, throughout the city and the nation, council member. And, you know, the intent of the commission, which was approved unanimously by both the city and the county over two years ago, was to try to remove all elements of racism, institutional racism, that may be built into the fabric of policies, practices, procedures. You know, that's really the intent of the commission is to help to remove those elements.
I think I understand that, Madam Mayor. First of all, this is not looking back. This is a present tense. And it says, "We have racism in our city government." If there is, let's hear about it. I don't believe that there is. If there was in the past, I don't doubt that there was in the past.
Well, you heard disparities based upon race just not too long ago.
I'm not talking about disparities. I'm saying, do we have racism in our city government? This says that we do.
My answer to that is yes.
Okay. I would appreciate some evidence thereof. And we can address that rather quickly, I think. My second, in the same item, the "vision" item, we want to achieve racial equity. Perhaps I'm ignorant, but I don't really know what that is. Is that, you know, I don't know how we're doing, and I don't know how we measure that. And it kind of goes along with my first objection. It sounds nice, but what is it exactly? And how do we measure it? Just to say it's there, I...
There was a tool that was introduced a while ago to actually have some measurement of progress toward equity. But as I recall, you didn't want to use that tool within city government.
I did not. I disagreed with the disparity approach to it. In other words, we have, you know, a certain percentage of this particular ethnic group in our city. Do we have that same percentage everywhere in City Hall or everywhere in the city? And of course, we don't. I don't know that that proves anything. I think what we're looking at here is racial discrimination. I don't think there's racial discrimination in the NBA, even though that many white...
What did you just say? What did you just say?
I don't think there is much racial discrimination in the NBA, even though there aren't very many white players. You get to play in the NBA by merit, not by how many people does it represent in the United States of America. So anyway, these are my objections. And also I have one more question, and this is on page four. And it's an addition on item number four, item A on number four. What is a racially diverse person? And that's also in paragraph C and CI.
Well, councilman, I think what the intent of that change was to talk about the fact that we wanted to have diverse chairs, meaning not from the same race, chairs, co-chairs of the steering committee that would be, or of the committee itself.
I think I get the idea, except I have a problem with the language. There's no such thing as a diverse person. Okay? I don't mind having different people of different races heading these things up. But a diverse person does not exist, I don't believe.
Again, the point was to have racially diverse co-chairs of each of the steering committee, as well as each of the subcommittees, so that it's not a homogeneous leadership.
I understand.
It could read racially diverse co-chairs or racially diverse leadership.
I understand. I think we should make that. I think it's clear what the intent is, but that's not what the language says. That's my problem there. So those are my objections, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
And even though I have objections, I'll move to approve as long as they're noted.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any other discussion? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since this item was pulled, I'll go ahead and just provide some comments. I do want to applaud our steering committee and our co-chairs, specifically Tim and Mary, for the work they've been doing in this space the last two years. Really... for the work they've been doing in this space the last two years, really mobilizing, galvanizing the troops in the commitment to this work. As we are seeing nationally, there is a trend to pull back from these type of efforts right now, and to see that we have a joint commission here that is based off the city and county government. I think that demonstrates what type of community we have here within our city and our county, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. I'm excited for the future of this work. I want to commend our Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer, Chief Green, who I believe I saw walk in the chambers as well, too, for her work in this space. And so, again, I know that the last couple months has been tough to have some quorums for some of the subcommittees, and that will change as well, too. The committees now will be able to meet virtually, based off of some of the language that's been changed in, in this charter. So I think that will also help engagement and also some results that we'll see in the future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash seven is a communication from the City Manager and Assistant City Manager with a request for the following. A, adopt an ordinance authorizing the establishment of TIF-interested parties' registries and adoption of registration rules for such registries for the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park TIF District; and B, adopt an ordinance to establish a date for a public hearing for the proposed Galena Road Industrial Park TIF District.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just some information, Mr. Manager. We established an interested party registry for our older TIFs.
We have, for every TIF, it's a legal requirement that you establish the registry so that people that want information about the TIF would be able to be notified.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry for taking up our time. It was new to me, so I've not been paying attention. So, I'm sorry about that. And I will move to approve item A.
Second, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Please cast your ballot, ballots, sorry. Okay. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion does pass unanimously, including Councilmember Grab. You, you had a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to make-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay.
We'll come back to it later.
Okay.
I'm excited about the Galena Road test.
Okay, great. And so, your vote, yes, he was a yes vote. Madam Clerk?
We need to vote on item B.
Yes. Councilmember Kelly?
I move to approve item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Any discussion? Councilmember Grab, do you want to comment now?
Yes, Manager, this could be an exciting area for development for our city. Do you have anything you, or maybe the district councilperson would like to add to the discussion here?
The area in question, this area along Galena Road, is predominantly zoned industrial. And, and looking at this as an area of future industrial development, we looked at the, the Galena Road area and thought this made a really good opportunity for us to work. The lion's share of the land that is east of Galena Road is owned by the water company that we're talking about here, and we've had discussions with them about, about future development and being able to look at, at that for future industrial development. There is industrial development as you go further north, before you get to the city's fire training tower that is in this location as well. So, it's a great opportunity for us to look at this. Very excited about this opportunity to try and foster additional industrial development. Today, we had the general meeting of the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council, and one of the items that came up, and it'll actually come up Friday when we talk with our legislators, is the fact that we don't have enough assembled land, industrial land-
Right.
-to foster development in the community. So this would certainly help us in that regard.
Right. And, you know, too often, I think we're riveted on the idea of bringing in some huge employer, but this council has been approving one development after the next, the accumulation of which I think will put us in very good stead and maybe even better than just some huge Goliath of an industry that could, could be helpful. But the things that we've been approving, for example, over off Allen Road, Councilman Seer's district with Maui Gym, et cetera, now this, I think these are huge pluses for our community, and they will ultimately make our community more prosperous and create more jobs.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Grab. I love when you turn your mic on and throw some, some good, good news for the 5th District. Actually, I just want to say, you know, I'm just teasing you, but we do have a lot of great things happening in the 5th District. I just want to compliment our, our manager, Mr. Urick, and obviously, Mr. Hayes will be part of this. Today, tonight is only step number one. There are many steps to come, and we'll be counting on, I will be counting out all my colleagues to help me with this development. Obviously, for me, I can't speak for any of you, but education is, to me, is a priority. Number two is innovation, and with, with TIF District, we possibly will open the door to a lot more innovation. So, thank you very much for voting for this tonight, and I'm looking forward to all the work that will be coming very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments, everyone, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash nine is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the East Village Growth Cell Advisory Committee with a request concur of Daniel Renick.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to ask if it would be possible to have these very useful and helpful bios for new appointments to be included in our packet or included, you know, on the, on the iPad.
I think there was an intention, because they just started coming, and I know you just got them today, but they were intended to go in the package earlier on.
That's great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome.
And I will move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any other questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash zero one two is a request to approve the committee report, policy session from the December 12, 2023 City Council Meeting on Violence Prevention Funding.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'd like to suggest or ask for a change in the minutes. The minutes state, I have to try to find it here.
That's from last meeting?
From the Violence Prevention Funding-
Oh, the notes?
Policy session.
It's the minutes.
And I'm on page three, paragraph four. The sentence in question, "Speaking of myself," said, "He said he supported long-term solutions such as lighting for a lasting impact on the community, and did not support funding programs focused on addressing poverty." That, it's a nuance, but it's, it's not really what I said. What I said was, "I'm disappointed that poverty programs don't seem to be working very well." That's what I said. I said, I, I did not say that I did not support funding programs focused on addressing poverty.
So, the committee report, isn't that this right here?
It's attached to your council communication. It's twenty-four dash zero one two in your packets.
Okay, okay, I see.
So if the clerk could correct that, I, I would appreciate it.
I understand.
Could we have a motion to amend the minutes?
I will so move.
Did you capture what he intended?
We, we had stated in the minutes that he said he supported long-term solutions, solutions such as lighting for a lasting impact on the community, and did not support funding programs focused on addressing poverty. So, you know, we can amend the minutes. We can review the recording as well to make sure we capture that accurately.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I am, Madam Mayor.
Based upon that amendment, do you want to?
I'll move to amend the minutes.
Okay. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We are at first readings. Twenty-four dash thirteen-
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
The motion to amend was passed, but the, but the item hasn't been approved. So they're amended, but they haven't been approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll bring that, we'll bring them back to approve. Is that correct? Or can we do it now? Okay. Councilmember Kelly?
I, I will, I will move to approve.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Now we're at first readings. Twenty-four dash thirteen is a communication from the City Manager, Corporation Counsel, and Director of Public Works with a request to rescind file a first reading of an ordinance establishing the West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area.
Council Hayes?
Thank you. Appreciate a motion to defer this, and I want to explain why. I discovered in my review of finalizing the items for this agenda that there was a flaw in the legal description for the public hearing that we did in October. It was my error. I should have caught it back in September when I reviewed that, but I did not. To correct that, we need to start the process from there and move forward. I've spoken with the city manager when I discovered this error, as well as the Public Works Director. This will not affect the project being done this year, but we'll have to start the process anew. So, we'll have a ordinance before the City Council at the next meeting to approve a public hearing in the second February council meeting, and then we'll be in position to approve this in the first meeting in May. And the project will still take place this summer, absent some unforeseen circumstances of objections.
What date do you want this deferred, council?
We can defer this generally, and then we'll re-agenda this item in May, when it's up for approval.
Okay. Can I get a motion to defer? Moved by Councilmember Grab, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions, discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at regular business. Twenty-four dash fourteen is a communication from the City Manager with a request to approve the 2024 Annual City Legislative Agenda.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the, this is our annual legislative agenda for 2024. We do have in this some recurring items in our requests for direct sponsorship. We also have some funding requests, some vertical and horizontal capital projects, and then just some general position support. The first item is, is our public safety pension reform request, looking to extend the amortization period. Second would be to include Peoria County in the list of counties that can utilize automated traffic law enforcement systems. Third, looking at making some changes to the Safety Act and some of the public safety legislation to strengthen some of the, the different types of cases and, and strengthen their felonies to higher classes, making it that certain offenses require mandatory detention, really to try and address the detrimental effect that that's had on our neighborhoods. Fourth, looking at economic development incentives and what we can do to support more expansive economic development incentives through the state of Illinois. And then fifth, looking at the urban decay statute and changing that to include redevelopment as an eligible tax abatement within that process. Under the funding requests, obviously, we have projects that have been approved in the state's budget that we'd like to see the funding released. We're asking for those dollars to be released. Continued supportive violence reduction programming, the warehouse district parking structure and the relocation of the State Street post office, looking at capital projects, road projects such as Pioneer Parkway, looking at Allen Road, Laramie Avenue, and then the Springdale Cemetery road network. And then we have just various position supports that we've had in for a number of years. So, it's pretty straightforward. We would have the, we have our legislative breakfast is scheduled for this Friday at the downtown library. The program will start at 7:30. Doors will open at 7:15. We have gotten confirmations from four of our state senators that represent all of Peoria County, including the two, or the three that represent the city of Peoria. We have confirmations of three representatives and then staff from three of the other representatives that will be there as well. So, looking forward to sharing this with our legislative delegation and hearing their outlook for this upcoming legislative session as well.
Great. Do we have confirmation from a good number of, of us, the council?
We will certainly confirm that and make sure that we do.
Okay. We want to make sure that we have a good presence as well. This is Friday, this Friday morning at our legislative breakfast. It's really important, if you're able to attend, to, to be there.
Weather permitting, hopefully, this, this other storm that's coming through doesn't hit us too hard Thursday night.
If the weather is very inclement and slippery, or, you know, just not a good time, what will, what's the backup plan?
So, we'll, we'll look at making a decision on Thursday, and if that's the case, we'll shift to a Zoom meeting and do it that way, and we'll get the invitations out to everybody on Thursday.
Okay. Any questions, comments on the legislative agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Seer? Oh, just, I'll, I'll get right back to you, Councilmember Valpula. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, can you give us a bit more detail about the funding request? Because I thought some of these have been, have been, I guess I was not telling the whole truth. I thought they were, were done, but I guess we're not.
So, no, I, we have, we have made the request of our legislators for funding such as Main Street, the Riverfront, funding for Pioneer Parkway and MacArthur Highway. Those funds have not been released from DCEO. They've been reauthorized again and again in the, in the state budgets, but they haven't been released. And so, that's why we've put those back on the list, asking the legislators to ensure that those dollars get released to the city.
So, what is the earliest time that, example, Peoria Riverfront? I mean, what's the earliest time that money could be released?
Well, if, if they, they call us this week and say that we're ready to go with releasing the funds, it'll take us a few months to work through the process with them to, to get the funding released or, or the mechanism in place for that. But that's something that, that, you know, it's been in their, the state's budget for the last four years. So, we're, we'd really like- So we're, we'd really like to see that, that does, those funding.
So I'm real happy to see that the Civic Center has not mentioned this report, and their funds have been released then.
They have been released.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome, and that's a good example, the Civic Center, which was $25 million. How long was that allocated on a list before it actually got released, do you recall?
Might have been two or three years.
That's what I thought. It took, it took a couple, three years. Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, we talk about the relocation of the State Street Post Office. Is that something that is our wish, or is that something that the federal government is actually actively pursuing?
No, Councilman, that, that's, that's our wish. That's our request. The U.S. Postal Service, their policy is that if a city wants the post office to be relocated in their community, they'll work with them as long as we build them a like-kind operation. So that's something that we would want to certainly look at as we would structure that, and that, you know, as we've discussed with the rail initiative, that that may be a good location for the station for downtown. That was the reason why we put that on the list.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Grab?
Thank you, Manager and staff, for encapsulating much of the input, perhaps all the input from the council members. I have to be focused on the public safety amendments that are being requested, because that's what I hear about virtually every day from my constituents, with general alarm about the way things are going with many of the repeat offenders. And we all know that the vast majority of our citizens here in Peoria, including our young kids, are law-abiding people. We're at inflection point as it relates to what we're going to do about people who repeatedly commit crimes, vicious crimes, and who are harming innocent people and destroying the tranquility of our neighborhoods. I think that as I look at this, Manager, you have not framed this city request as it relates to public safety amendments in the form of repeal and replace. I think what we're asking for, unless this council wants to change this, is amending it to allow, for example, mandatory detention for Class II, Class I felonies. And so we want our state lawmakers to know how much we appreciate what they have been doing for us, and our federal lawmakers as well. So when we meet with them, I hope they take this in the appropriate way, because the Safety Act was a big flat point all over this state. And you had public officials in every county, whether it be state's attorney, police superintendent, or county sheriff department, saying there were some problems with this. And it just seemed like they hunkered down, and no, there are no problems. Now, I happen to know that many of the problems that we have, and you know this, that we're having in Peoria are not unique, Mayor Lee, to Peoria.
That's right.
Some of the communities, for example, that came down for the rail press conference, like Morris and Pontiac and Bloomington, and they weren't here for that, but comparably sized cities, they're having many of the same problems that we have. And I think our command staff with the Peoria Police Department and police officials throughout the state are taking a look at what we can do to make our community safer and take the people who are very viciously preying on innocent folks off the streets until it's safe to let them go back. So I, I'm going into this with a very positive attitude, and I hope they will accept every one of our suggestions in a positive way, because they've been working very hard for us.
I think it will be well received. Do you want to make a motion to approve?
Sure. Should I make a motion to approve the 2024 Annual City Legislative Agenda?
Seconded by Councilmember Reganbach. Any further discussion? Oh, Councilmember Valpula, did you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just have one quick question for Mr. Manager.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for, for the comprehensive report. I just wanted to, you know, I was looking, I was trying to compare this request with previous U.S. requests, and you're right, majority of them are a repetition. But I, I wanted to know also about the performance of our lobbyists. What were the, what were their accomplishments in 2023, and what will be their outlook for 2024? And, and also a report back on what we asked, what we got, and what we did not would be more appreciated, because for me, if I went back and looked at 2023 request and 2024 request, both looked the same except one here and there.
Manager?
Yeah. Councilman, we'll be happy to put together a report back, kind of a summary of what, what we've received over the last several years in terms of, of grants that have, that have been legislatively directed, thanks to the efforts of our lobbyists, and we'll also talk about some of the other efforts that they've been working on for us as well. So we can prepare that and get that out to council by next week.
Will our lobbyists be at the meeting?
They will be here.
Okay.
That'll be good. That'll be good. Just a follow-up. So, so these are the, so I saw there are one, two, three, four, five requests, five requests for direct sponsorship. The landscape of Peoria may have changed from 2023 to 2024. Are you still willing to add any more requests, or this is pretty much it?
The acoustics are killing me, but.
Councilman, could, could you repeat that one more time? Sorry about that. We're just trying to get the, the question.
So basically, we have listed five requests for the 2024 Legislative Agenda. Can we, can we add more requests, or this is it?
Well, well, this was, we, we put this together at the request of, of council. We sent a request out to everyone, asking them to submit information to us about what they wanted to see.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah. No, no. No, I was, I was, after reading this, I felt that maybe if there is a request to add something for the substance abuse and mental health services, probably from there, it'll be helpful as well. I don't know if there's time for addition, but.
I, I don't think the door is shut to adding something later on. I mean, this is what we're going to present to them on Friday, but if there's something that comes up along the way that we want to sit, talk to our legislators about, we want to move something through the lobbyists about, there's no, you know, time limit on that.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a general question for you, City Manager. Looking at some of these items, some of these items are, are going to require state support. And so when we talk about public safety pension reform and some of these others, those aren't unique challenges to the city of Peoria. Are our other neighboring municipalities, are they having these same items on their agenda, so that way we present more of a united front, that these are some common kitchen table issues that we need support statewide?
Yes, and, and the municipal league is as well. Pension reform is one of the, the items in the state Illinois Municipal League's legislative agenda that they have continually put forward as being important. There are communities across Illinois that are, are talking about public safety pension reform and the challenges that it would face. I mean, it's no surprise that, that, you know, the, the projections that we put together for you in the budget where we show what, what that, that continuing growth in pension costs are going to be up till 2040, every community is facing that same thing. Some are at different levels, just depending on their assessed value. If they're more affluent or not, they may have a higher tax base, but everyone is facing that same issue.
No, I would definitely appreciate that, and I know that there was some appetite around the council to look into the automatic cameras, if you will, for the, the traffic lights and things of that nature. And so I didn't know if that was also the appetite of some of our local municipalities in the area as well, too. Again, just kind of having, just kind of singing from the same hymn may get us some more support to get some of those downstate strategies, so.
You know, I think that there's, this, this one is probably more specific, because it would, you're, you're asking to add a specific county to that list. You know, so that, that is where it would be focused on Peoria County by doing that. If there are others that are doing it, I haven't heard, you know, and, and quite frankly, you know, in, we're somewhat unique in that we have this legislative agenda that we put together. Some communities don't do this to this level of specificity as they go forward with that.
Okay. Thank you.
They rely on the municipal league.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions. What's the justification for treating, you know, Chicago pension funds different from downstate? That, that doesn't seem very fair to me.
It, it was designed that way, and I think that, that, you know, it goes back, you know, when they created pensions 70, 80 years ago, they put them in different, different statutes, and they have different, different benefit structures and different, different levels of requirements that are set out in each one of those different statutes, so.
Well, yeah, that seems kind of, kind of an easy sell for my vantage point. And also with regard to the Safety Act, you know, we, there was a lot of talk about, you know, how that'd be the purge when it finally went into effect. I think that went into effect September 18th. I'm not sure that there's been so much recidivism before trials, you know, people being released and then committing crimes before their trials, such that we've, we've seen, you know, a big difference. I, I do think, I do think what's, you know, been the problem before and is a continuing problem is, you know, minors committing crimes, stealing cars throughout our city. That's, that seems to be more the Juvenile Courts Act than the Safety Act. I know the Safety Act gets a lot of the spotlight and a lot of the attention, but, you know, juvenile courts, you know, 16-year-olds stealing cars, 15-year-olds joyriding, you know, get, get released to their parents as a matter of course, and it's, it's not really the judges, it's not the prosecutors, it's the laws written. So that's not a Safety Act issue, in my opinion. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. Councilmember Grab?
Well, we all got a report a few days ago about malignant player downtown who broke into many, many vehicles, belonging to people who either worked or lived downtown. And according to the report that was given to us by the police department, this person had been arrested multiple times in about an eight-day period. And these were just wanton acts of destruction. If that particular person had been arrested and had to make bail, we would have probably saved a lot of grief for people who had destruction of their property and their homes downtown, an area we're trying to raise up and make people feel like they can live there safely. Same thing with other neighborhoods, and I think you're right on, on this one, Councilman Vespa. Kids, what we're doing with kids, it's a joke, and they know it. And if you sit where I sit and you get the calls about the cars that continue to be car, car windows broken, rifling through the cars, stealing the cars, same kids laughing at the police, yeah, they just laugh. Something's got to give. It has to give. We have to find a new way of dealing with it. And yes, maybe there aren't a lot of pre-trial items we can count to yet, but there's enough that stand out in my mind as being very significant ones. And the juvenile element alone is just mind-boggling. You take a look at the number of kids we've buried in Peoria in the past two years, between the ages of 18 and 24. And take a look at the number of times they've interfaced with the juvenile justice system. We have a problem here. And I, I don't have all the answers, and that is why I think it is so productive for us to meet with our state lawmakers, because I'm not the only one thinking this. My constituents think that, many of us think this. Our command staff at the police department, I don't want to speak for all of them, they have to deal with, with some of this every single day. Police go out and they arrest them, and sometimes they jeopardize their very lives doing it. And possibly the person being apprehended or eluding police. And my constituents, maybe yours are different, this is probably the single biggest quality of life issue we have in Peoria is this repeat crime, recidivist crime. And where we can, and I didn't say replace, but where we can amend that Safety Act to address some of these things, I think we should, and I think our constituents are going to demand it. And I'm going to work to that end regardless, but I appreciate the comments that are made, but I'll tell you what, some things going to have to give, because we can't keep people excited about living in community, this community, investing downtown, et cetera, when we have all this rampant crime. And, and the police, many of our police, talk to them, talk to them. They feel like they're going out there with their hands tied behind their backs. Seriously, talk to them. And then some of these people, you're going to give them a citation? Really? Okay, yeah, right. So we wonder why we're viewed as being rather ineffective in making our community safe for the rest of us who just want to live in peace and tranquility and not have to worry about living our lives in this community, not having our cars stolen, windows broken out, not being robbed, et cetera, not having a home break, not having a bullet coming through the door or the window of the house. The number of shots being fired in this community, the number of people who were shot last year is unbelievable. Now, this goes in cycles. We've been here before. This isn't the first time we've had big problems. And frankly, Mayor, that's why we, we lobbied effectively back in the 90s and early 2000s to get some assistance from the federal government to hire more police officers. And there were people who sat in this horseshoe, and they said, "Well, we don't think we want to apply for these cops grants, because it only pays for the first three years of the police officer." But we ended up hiring 36 additional police back in the mid 90s and into the 2000s, the aughts, because of this, this assistance. And, and we, we did reduce the number of homicides, but we'd been at 25 before. I don't know about 29 this year. So I, I don't want to act like the sky is falling, we've never been here before, because we have been, but we've made the appropriate adjustments in the past to deal with the threat level, and I'm, I'm convinced we'll do it again this time, Mayor Lee.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mayor, if there's, based upon what Councilman Vespa said and what Councilman Grab just said, if, if there's no objection to the council, we'll make that tweak to the language here on the public safety changes to include the Juvenile Court Act, so we can just talk about that as well.
Okay, that's great. I don't, no objections? Okay, that's great. Uh, Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to clarify, I, I think as written, I, I think it's fine. I do, I do agree with adding more classes and reclassifying certain crimes to make it so that if you, if you are arrested on, you know, a dangerous crime like fleeing and eluding police, I, I think that's reasonable to make that something that would lead to pre-trial detention. My, my concern is, you know, people committing, committing nonviolent crimes and then being told, "You gotta, you gotta put up $500," and this, so they sit in jail and they lose their jobs, they lose their kids, their farm animals die, because I've actually seen that as a public defender. So, I mean, you have to strike a balance there. I, I am, though. I, I think the, the proposals that were put forth here are reasonable, so I'm not objecting to that. Thank you.
All right. Is that an amended motion? Is that an amended second by Councilmember Reganbach? Okay. All right. If there's no more discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula? Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash fifteen is a communication from the City Manager and Assistant City Manager with a request to approve the purchase of infrastructure for an outdoor dining pilot program in the downtown central business area and riverfront with the vendor Maude Street in the amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy New Year to you all. I want to present our request for a pilot to look at outdoor dining in the downtown central business district and riverfront area in the amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars using ARPA funds. In twenty-twenty-two, when I arrived, I was informed that Economic Development was looking to place petlets in the, excuse me, parklets, all these pets and parks, parklets into the right-of-way to extend outdoor dining for businesses in the downtown business district area. And so, if you know what a parklet is, we, in two thousand and eighteen, up Main Street, we, in front of the ice cream shop, there was a parklet that was, the invasion team at the time had used as a, a pilot model for potential expansion of parklets along Main Street and in other areas of the city. So, we had a history of, of utilizing parklets, but we wanted to use it in the downtown, that was the direction. So, in doing that, what we decided to do in Economic Development, we looked to our community partner, Urbain Kind Consulting, to have them come in and really evaluate, if we're going to put parklets in the downtown, where would it make the most sense, since we didn't have the capacity in-house to really do that type of evaluation? So, over the course of a few months, Urbain Kind met with Community Development, we spoke to, we spoke to them in Economic Development, spoke to, looked at our current policies and ordinances, and then did an evaluation of what we can do moving forward and what type of vendor we can potentially be moving forward with. Initially, we were just going to go ahead and get the container parklets that you see in our neighboring community in Peoria Heights. It's very successful, everyone knows how that structure looks like. It is a one, once you construct it, it's a one-unit piece, so you can't deconstruct it. So, there was questions about, will we do move with that type of material? Where will we store it in public works? So, you know, that was the first question, is where will we store multiple units? So, we brought that challenge to Urbain Kind as well. And so, in doing so, they came back and they presented us with a few of vendors adherents to our purchasing policy. We did review a number of vendors, and then we came that Maude Street was the most viable vendor that fit the criteria that we wanted to move forward with. But in selecting Maude Street, we realized that they offered more than just a container. They actually offered units, and what the units are, allows for flexibility, that you can construct and deassemble and deassemble, as well as something that we didn't even think about, which totally took the project to the different direction, they offer a system called a petlet, which is a pedestrian walkway. Why is that important? Because, as we're going to explain in a couple of our locations, not for having a petlet option, we would not be able to put, place a outdoor fencing at their location because of ADA accessibility requirements and right-of-way. You have to make sure people have access to the sidewalk and that they have the ability to walk freely, and if you have a, a piece of any type of infrastructure in the sidewalk that is permanent or temporary, that does not allow for accessibility, you have to make accessibility a way possible. In certain places, we removed trees to make that possible, but we did not want to remove any type of infrastructure that was currently in place, so the petlet actually allowed for us to expand the program and look beyond just what we currently have. So, in doing that, we were able to then think about, if we were going to have a parklet in the central business downtown area, where would it make sense? Long story short, a petlet in the current construction of our downtown streets is not probably the most ideal viable option, because even though our streets say that are, that the miles per hour to drive vehicles is thirty miles per hour, in practice, we do not see people adhering consistently to that thirty miles per hour requirement. And so, until we have the reconstruction of our streets, where we will have bumpouts and other ways of calming traffic down, to slow down the traffic so that they're not going at a higher speed of rate, having a stationary object in the street may not be the most ideal at this present time. But we did not want to scrap the program. So, what instead we decided to do is say, well, let's look at it from a different angle. If we do have them on the sidewalks, keep them as sidewalk cafes, as we call them, could we look at, how can we make a uniform, more elevated look of a, of a program so that in the future, we can figure out maybe a cost sharing with businesses, or give them some type of blueprint on how they can construct one that would allow for more durability? So, that is what we're here today presenting to you. We identified four businesses who are in the cities right-of-way, so that means the city owns the sidewalks, so they have the permission to use those sidewalks. The businesses have been established for over a year, over a year and a half, so they are established restaurant or bar, and they meet the criteria for having a cafe that will allow for accessibility for public right-of-way. One thing that I would say about this project, that we really took our time to think about the materials being used, so we talked about vandalism, we talked about ease of use of clean. This, because they are in the cities right-of-way, we are going to disassemble them in the, in the wintertime to allow for the sidewalks to be open again. We have a place to store, because of the fact that they're now compact and they're easy for us to lift and move out the way, we no longer have to worry about finding additional storage to place these items over the winter months. And it's something that our Public Works Department is very excited about. And working with us, Mr. Si Maro was very excited, something that he's always won and championed for us to do, but we just couldn't find the right product. This is the right product for the city, and I think it will elevate our downtown and support our small businesses in conjunction to that. So, if there's any further questions, I'm here to answer those questions. I was trying to give a brief overview, but I, I don't want to be too long-winded, so I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Manager Richardson. Is the project restricted to just those four businesses initially?
It is.
Okay.
And we did invite other businesses, and, and these were the four that responded saying that they would be interested to work with us.
Okay, so we're keeping track of those that may want to come on board at a later time?
Yeah, we, we, in downtown, so we kept it very much in the downtown. We actually went around and looked at every business that would have an assess, have access and to, in, I would say, eighty percent of those businesses, we are capturing.
Councilmember Grab?
Manager Richardson, you've done a great job on this, and in conversation with the big four that have been approved so far, they're excited, looking forward to it. I had the chance to visit with the engineers out at the Director Power Shop on Drees Lane a few days ago, and I understand we're going to begin that very important, talked about since ninety-five, we're actually doing it, the conversion of Adams and Jefferson, we're going to start in a few weeks, actually, and we're hoping that the conversion of Adams and Jefferson from Walnut to Hamilton will be completed by July of twenty-six. Are we thinking in terms of sequencing that as we get parts of this done, we might be able to begin, even though the entire redirection of Adams and Jefferson project might not be totally complete because of the length of it?
Yes, sir. And, and I would also, what's so nice about this product is that as we continue to build the infrastructure, they're interchangeable pieces, so we can move and place these anywhere we would like to see. So, I, when we finish with the two-lane conversion, the hope is going back to those businesses and re-engaging them now that the project is completed, to see if they would like to be a participant in the program. We did allocate funds in twenty-twenty-four using ARPA dollars for this to expand up Main. The petlet is a game changer, and I think if we expand up Main, we will have the petlets part of that project to allow for expansion of this program.
You know, when we, I think the first one, Manager, was outside Los Delicias, and, you know, that was one of the negatives that we saw, that it was made out of wood, and I think now we have the ability to collapse these and store them more readily. Probably not going to use them in the winter?
No, that is condition of the project program, that the businesses understand that it's a seasonal use.
Good, I, I'm excited about it, and I know the merchants downtown are, but, you know, Mayor, I think there might be some more businesses that might want to join.
I think so.
Well, I look forward not to make this a pilot, we're going to come back to council with an evaluation to share out, so if there's any further questions or interests, we will look forward to answering any of those questions in Economic Development.
Councilmember Gordon Yon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Manager Richardson, I just wanted to commend you and the staff with this wonderful work. I am a fan of outdoor dining, and I think that it definitely gained popularity during COVID, at the height of COVID, you know, to keep businesses going, but I especially like that it gives opportunities for our businesses to draw in more support. But I also wondered, and I, and you touched on it, you know, how far we're talking about expanding, I was thinking about Main Street, and so I know my colleague Grab would like to hear, to see that, and because it's just perfect, the perfect area to see and, and to make that connection from downtown all the way up to Hill. Uh, I guess my question for you is for the listening audience, because I think there's going to be a huge waiting list for something like this, at least it sounds like it, it looks beautiful. How would business owners, you know, apply or get on that waiting list or keep an eye out for additional information regarding this?
We are going to continue our partnership with Urbain Kind, and they're going to help us evaluate how we move this next, to the next step. So, that has already been something that we've been ideating about, is how do we expand if the pilot is successful? We call it a pilot because we are testing this out to see if the types of materials in the layout really makes sense, but the fact that we can have some uniformity with some of our, our product, especially with outdoor dining, would be very beneficial. So, Main Street is definitely on our radar, and we are looking at all the areas where we have our major corridors of, of outdoor, of outside dining that's already established. Could we expand other businesses to, you know, participate with that?
And then just one more comment, I also really appreciate the fact that it's interchangeable. And so, that means if the business moves, then maybe it can go with them or whatever, but at, at least it's not permanent fixture.
No.
There's flexibility there.
We own the, the infrastructure, and maybe that's a conversation we can have later, if there's a way for a business to purchase it, but for now, under the pilot, we do own that, so if that business does go out and there's not a restaurant there to replace it, we can move that infrastructure to another location.
Awesome, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleague. This is innovative, it's timely, as we talk about just how do we continue to keep growing and developing our downtown, which is one of the greatest assets that we have in our community. I love the idea, and seeing that you're collaborating with a, a local consultant firm in Urbain Kind, I, I, I know some of their team, and, and that's great as well, too. And I do believe that this is going to open up the possibilities of what other businesses can do. You know, once you see that Neon Bison has outdoor dining now, and now across the street, you say, "May, maybe I can think about this," you know, where there's that strip where the judges' chambers is, or just other businesses, you know, I think sometimes we're afraid to try or afraid to, to see the possibilities, and so I commend your staff for having the vision to try something different, and I'm, I'm excited, as someone who works downtown now, I look forward to, to visiting one of these outdoor dining spaces in the near future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I would just like to echo the sentiments, this looks like a great idea. I'm, I'm really excited about possibilities in and around areas like Fulton Street, which, you know, is a, can be a very inviting place for lunch, for music, entertainment. I just had one question, and I, in the, in the literature, I don't know if I overlooked it, do we know much about ours, with this primarily operate during lunch, evening, dinner? Do we know much about that?
The business would continue to operate as they normally do, and if they have a liquor license, they would still have to adhere to their liquor license requirements, so we will continue to support those businesses, and hopefully they are able to expand, because now we're adding capacity by allowing them to be having, having outdoor dining where some of these businesses, I, I'm going to be honest with you, one business owner was just over the moon, because they knew this is something they wanted to do, but did not have the capital to, to invest in it, because they were trying to keep their business afloat just with the change in economy, and so this really has allowed some of those businesses to really think beyond just the now. So, hopefully that will allow some businesses to expand. The Neon Bison, as you all know, is moving to the six-hundred block of Main, so this is where that infrastructure will be, and they're going to be, right now, they're currently a bar only, they're expanding into a restaurant, so this is going to help elevate their additional services that they are providing.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assistant City Manager, my, my hat and my hair, but my hat is off to you, I think this, this sounds like a wonderful idea. It could be a real catalyst for really changing the ambiance of our downtown and really making it more, more attractive to more people. So, I, I just want to compliment you on the work, the, the drawings and the, and the photos from other cities are very attractive. Looks like very good work, thank you.
I would also like to acknowledge Urbain Kind is here tonight, we have Chantel and Tania back there, and I have to give it to the, their team, they're really where the engine behind this, if not for their support, you know, we would probably still be talking about it. So, to be in front of you tonight really is a testament to the team and their efforts and commitment to their community, so thank you to them as well.
Great job, great job, Manager Richardson, great job, ladies, it looks like we like it. Manager, is this a budget amendment?
This is part of, what we've already budgeted is part of the American Rescue Plan Fund, so there's no budget.
Okay, so we don't have to have a certain number of votes, other than majority. Councilmember Grab?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, as outlined, spending no more than one hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Excellent, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Seer, is that what you were going to do? Okay. All right, we have a, a motion and a second to approve the hundred and seventy, up to one hundred and seventy-five thousand for this. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Manager.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash sixteen is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Counsel with a request to adopt an ordinance approving the real estate exchange agreement between the city of Peoria, Cass Technologies, Inc., and E&amp;M Properties Peoria, LLC.
Corporation Counsel Hayes?
Thank you. I have a bit of a story to tell.
Uh-oh.
I'll try to keep it short. So, the council has previously approved our Depot Street project, which is a, just shy of a three-hundred parking space parking lot, as well as an improvement- of a 300 parking space parking lot, as well as an improvement to what is right now an unimproved alleyway behind the properties in the 800 and 900 block of Southwest Washington. This project will support the housing, the rehabilitation of a number of properties and the housing units that are going into those properties. One problem we've had with some of these Warehouse District properties is they don't have the capacity to support parking on site. And so to have the number of residences that we are planning on, we need more parking. And so this is part of that solution. The project as originally designed would have done a couple of things that weren't optimal. It's just where we were at a year ago. The project would not have completed Depot Street all the way to Persimmon. The last 100 and 250 feet of that was privately owned by Cast Technologies. They're at the, they're at Persimmon, they operate a large foundry on the south side of Persimmon, but on the north side of Persimmon, at the corner of all of the Depot Street project, they have their receiving and delivery. The project as designed would have cut off an area that they were using to turn their trucks around to get to their loading docks. But they happen to own the rest of the alleyway that would allow Depot Street to extend to Persimmon. That alleyway was also subject to easements for Springman that operates within E&amp;M Properties buildings on the north side of the street, of Depot Street. So we were able to persuade those property owners to engage in a property swap. We're giving Cast the little area in the southeast corner of the parking area, about half of the square footage that we're taking from Cast to finish the alleyway all the way to Persimmon. So we're going to be able to finish the alleyway to the Through Street, which is going to be helpful for circulation. It makes better sense. We've worked out with E&amp;M Properties how to adjust the easement so we can get rid of a large loading dock that was compromising the alleyway, and now that we're going to rebuild a smaller loading dock. There was no money exchanged in the purchase of the alleyway from Cast. The city's expenses are the extension of the roadway, as well as the improvements to the, to the loading dock to have that fit in the space. The few different moving parts, that's why the document in front of you is so complex and lengthy. But this is a property swap to allow us to have a complete project now back there. It doesn't give away too many of the parking spaces. It creates an amenity that's improved. It assists the businesses there instead of compromising Cast's operations. It allows the city to be proud of that area back there, and I think it's going to be an amenity where it's going to draw people there and say, hey, this is a place we can park our cars. If you've been down there, that alleyway is a bit challenging. I'm glad when I drive it that I have a pickup truck. It's going to be a nice finished alleyway. It's going to be an amenity and a positive. It's going to be a well-lit 300-space parking lot instead of what is right now a bit of Sherwood's Forest. If you're back there, it's treed and hilled, and we're going to get rid of all that. So this is a great improvement for our downtown, along the lines of what Councilman Grayup was talking about earlier. We're making our downtown a place where people want to live. And this project's, when it's done, is going to accomplish that in a way that's truly important for people who want to live in these redeveloped properties. So we'll be back in front of the council within the next 60 days for one additional piece of this related to the development agreement being adjusted to give us the time to finish this project and take care of a couple of the details with the original developer. But this part of the project, I'm happy to bring to a conclusion, it's been a little more difficult than I thought starting, but we haven't spent a lot of extra money, other than on the infrastructure we're going to be putting in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Corporation Counsel? Councilmember Jackson? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I just had a comment and a question. We're creating parking spaces as opposed to building a parking area, because it's kind of narrow back there, and you're right, it's pretty tore up.
There you go.
Thank you. The plan all along was to build a surface parking lot between the 800 to 1,000 block of Washington Street. Where we are studying right now the potential for a parking structure would be across the street in the, from about 813 to 905 Washington, on the other side of the street, looking at a parking structure at that location. The demand is there and continues to grow for additional parking in the Warehouse District. So it's a good problem to have.
Yes, it is. And one last question. Do we know, where are we, or where? I know the goal had been up with regards to housing units downtown apartments. Do we know what those numbers are?
Well, I think that, that there's currently 124 units under construction at 812 Southwest Washington. There's another 180 units at 801 and 800 Southwest Washington that are on the books. We've added probably another 400 units in the Warehouse District between other developments that have occurred. And the plan would be, I think, well, at 800 Adams, I think there's another 90 units that are being built there as well. So I'm just trying to keep track of everything there, so.
Okay.
Quite a bit.
Okay. We're, it sounds like we're reaching or exceeding that 800 mark.
Oh, yeah. I think that, you know, as far as additional units and the potential growth, we've done a number of studies, working with the Downtown Development Corporation, on the number of apartments that we can add every year, and I think a couple hundred a year is still within that realm of possibility. And we've seen that the demand from the development community is still pretty strong.
All right. Thank you. Very good project. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just have a quick comment and question. First, I think this is a much-needed project, and there's certainly a need for more parking spaces, particularly as we're continuing to develop downtown. I was just wondering, when we're talking about the estimated cost that we may be going over, do we have the dollar amount where we're at?
Yeah, I think that the overall project with some of the facility-related work, or utility-related work, excuse me, it's going to, it's going to probably end up being closer to 13 to 14 million dollars is where we're going to be. That all come out of the TIF, and that's where, you know, as additional TIF increment is generated, that that's where that'll be paid back for out of there.
Okay. Thank you.
You say 13 and 1400, not 1000?
Million. 13, 14 million dollars.
Million dollars. Okay.
As, as your Public Works Director would tell you, nothing's cheap when it comes to infrastructure anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Can I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young, to approve the real estate exchange agreement between the city and Cast Technologies and E&amp;M Properties Peoria LLC. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash seventeen is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request for the following. A, accept the fiscal year 2023 Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $125,000. And B, to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2023 revised budget relating to the general fund to recognize the receipt of grant funding from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, providing the fiscal year 2023 DCEO grant in the amount of $125,000. And Item B requires a two-thirds vote of the council members voting, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
So this is a grant that we received from the state of Illinois through DCEO. It's $125,000. Due to the timing of the grant, what we wanted to do is use this funding through the police department for their license plate reader technology, and this will reimburse us for the costs that we've already incurred.
Any questions? Councilmember Grayup?
Move to approve A as outlined.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Move to approve A. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Grayup?
Move to adopt the ordinance amending the budget as outlined in B for the receipt of grant funding from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity.
Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Any questions, comments? Please pack, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash eighteen is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request for the following. A, to accept the fiscal year 2023 Illinois Department of Human Services grant from the Illinois Department of Human Services in the amount of $500,000. B, adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2425 biennial budget relating to the general fund to recognize the receipt of grant funding from the Illinois Department of Human Services in the amount of $500,000. And this item requires a two-thirds vote of council members voting, no less than six. C is to approve the release of two notices of funding opportunities in the amount of $250,000 for youth-related violence prevention grant activities, and the amount of $105,000 for youth-related violence prevention micro grant activities, with recommendations to come to council for an internal staff review team. And D, to approve the remaining grant funding to be spent on police and fire explorer equipment in the amount of $100,000, supplies for the Peoria Role Model Project in the amount of $35,000, and grant writing 301 workshops in the amount of $10,000.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the grant that we discussed at the policy session that we had last month. It's $500,000 from the Illinois Department of Human Services. What we wanted to do with this, so obviously the first item, Item A, is to just accept that grant. Item B is to create the budget amendment, and then Item C is the approval of how we'll go about spending those dollars. And with that, what we're recommending is, as we discussed, the $250,000 for, for violence prevention funding to go out for the community. And there's the grant, or the proposed RFP is listed in the packet. In addition, taking $105,000 and trying to work with smaller agencies that have kind of been left out in the past. And really, the police department has leaned in and said that they will work with those smaller agencies to ensure that their report writing and follow-up and follow-through is, is up to snuff, so that we can make sure that we're complying with the state's grant requirements. And then that leaves us then with a remaining $145,000 in the grant, and we have three recommendations here. The police and fire departments explorer programs, funding equipment for those, funding the role model project, supplies for the role model project to match what came in through PNC Bank for that program. And then lastly, and this has been very well received by the community, is that our police department's grants team has been providing kind of grants 101 and 10201, and now 301 training for the community to try and build their grant management capabilities, and that's what the, the remaining $10,000 would be for. The, because again, we have to spend these dollars by July 1. We have an internal review team that we're recommending to come back to you with recommendations, and that's going to include the chief of police, the community development director, the community development grants director, the city manager, and the police department's grants coordinator as well. So that's the team, and I think four of the five of us are here in the audience tonight. So, but we'll be making those recommendations with a very, very quick turnaround to try and get the dollars out the door and spent.
So would those come back to the next council meeting?
I'm not sure if it'll be the next council meeting, but we'll get them back to you as soon as we can, and that, so that we can start that process with, with the agencies. We're going to, we're trying to move as quick as we can on this, because we know that we have a very short window.
Questions? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one quick question. You said, Mr. Manager, that the money must be spent by July 1st.
That's correct.
Okay. And so, okay, all right.
Really, June 30th.
June 30th is the end of the fiscal year, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is, should do a great deal of good for us. I'd like to move to approve Item A.
Is there a second? By Councilmember Allen? Discussion on Item A. Councilmember Gordon Young?
I was canceling, I was going to move.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Discussion on Item A. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Kelly?
I'd like to move to adopt Item B.
Is there a second on B? Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Discussion on Item B.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Valpula?
I don't have any question, but I wanted to say that I'm, I'm really impressed of how the grants were allocated to both qualified applicants and organizations that usually don't qualify under the CBBG process. This is, this is something that I would, I would like to see, even, even all grants that are given to all organizations, so that everybody will have a fair chance of getting funding. I really like the way it was outlined. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Councilman. That's, I think that was really our intent, was, we knew after the, the first two rounds of violence prevention funding that went out, that it was, there were agencies that seemed to be rising to the top because they have the capacity. And so we wanted to, to break off some of this funding to be able to reach out to others that haven't been able to have a chance to get some of that funding. So thank you for those comments.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Please cast your ballots on Item B. Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Councilmember Kelly?
I'd like to move to approve Item C.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Grayup. Questions on Item C? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm following up, I think, a little bit on what Councilman Valpula just mentioned. The $250,000 for youth-related violence prevention, how is that different than what we've done in the past?
So because it's specific to youth-related programs, some of our other violence prevention funding has been more broad in terms of our ability to spend it, but because this money is coming from the Department of Human Services, they've, they've narrowed the scope for us to focus directly on youth. And I think that's where the major difference is between the funding that we're seeing in the past.
And would it be fair to say that organizations that have been awarded funds in the past and still have unspent money would not be considered for this additional resources since they're such a quick spend timeframe?
Well, I'm not, I, I'm not going to, you know, I think that, that as we look at, at what we're going to do as far as the evaluation criteria, I'm not sure if we built that in, maybe if Jenny, I don't believe that we built in unspent funds into that as a requirement. But I do think that what we're seeing is that some of the entities that receive, particularly in round two, are starting to assemble their, their programming to start to spend that money. Others have spent money that are starting to bill right now. It's the start of the new calendar year, and I've, you know, heard from at least one that had a significant amount of funding, that, that they're going to submit a bill for $250,000. So that's half of what they've received as far as funding. So they're moving forward with that as well.
I think it's important to keep us informed on that. And thank you, Chief, for the email yesterday, and I asked the clerk to provide this to all of us, just identifying, again, to have it in one place for us, because it seems like sometimes these grants and RFPs get kind of muddled in our minds. So just to see how much money has gone out and how much has been spent, and seeing the performance metrics. performance metrics, I think, is really important for us as we go forward. So, I would just ask that we don't go to the same wall over and over again, and that this 250 is perhaps, new agencies are encouraged to apply for that.
Programs.
New programming. Yes, yes, new programming. Thank you, Mayor. Specific to the $105,000 micro grants, I think that's a pretty innovative idea. We saw how well the neighborhood associations soaked that up last summer when we made that available to them. I'm just a little bit curious how, who the target is, is if I look at the RFP, it says eligible organizations are neighborhood associations, homeowner associations, neighborhood watch groups? I mean, those hardly seem like the people with the capacity or knowledge of what a violent, youth violence prevention program would be. Is that, am I missing something here?
We're going to continue to review and look at the requirements of the grant, but we wanted to make sure that we casted a wide net, and that we would put that out to see that people could apply.
And with this tranche, the organizations don't need an audit, apparently. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's going to be a nice wide net.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, we'll see some outcomes there that will be beneficial for all of us. Thank you.
Can you also identify, Mr. Manager, what is the age of a youth in this opportunity?
I believe that in youth here, we were talking 16 to 24, I think, is what we're looking at here.
What is it?
16 to 24.
16 to 24, okay. 16 to 24, okay. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad to hear that we'll be looking to open the pool, if you will, of eligible organizations to, and programming to go for these funds. Just a question, and it may be a report back, but I think that for the public, they don't, not everyone understands the time of when we voted to allocate the previous allocations of violence prevention funds. From the time we voted to the actual time the agencies received the funds, there was a, there's a timeline there. And I think that maybe we need to provide that information to the public, just so that way they can, it manages expectations of return on investment and things of that nature. And so, maybe that is something that you can put together a report back, just to help the public understand that we have a lot of different investments out here, and this was the time where agencies received the funds and then got their programs in place. So, that way, everyone is just on the same page and expectations are managed, just so they know that we're good stewards of their funds and we're investing wisely. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, please cash your ballots for Item C. Councilmember Velpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Kelly?
I'd like to move to approve Item D.
Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One question on the Role Model Project, which I think is a very worthwhile project and I'm fully supportive of. I'm just curious, though, what kind of ongoing expenses are incurred with that? I was under the impression that was more of a volunteer operation.
Well, I think that, you know, there's been, there's been meetings that have been held, that have had costs that have been incurred for those. And if there's continued meetings that were convenings of everyone, that there's going to be costs that are going to be incurred with that. There could be expenses that are incurred to encourage people to attend museums or things like that, that we might want to do as the Role Model Program rolls out. That's the reason why we wanted to do this, is bring it as a match to the money that PNC Bank put up, to try and leverage that even more as the program has continued to grow.
So, we could potentially give scholarships, if you will, to the students for things? Wonderful. Thank you.
Your stipends. There's also, you know, this working relationship with the Peoria Riverfront Museum for events there. And those events sometimes require food or certain accommodations. And the Park District has been great about providing, not waivers, but kind of tickets to their zoo and different facilities that they have. And the Riverfront Museum is a great venue to be able to take youth to, but there's some expense associated with that as well.
Thank you.
Any additional comments, questions? Please cash your ballots. Councilmember Velpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Twenty-three dash three ninety-nine is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve the low bid from J.C. Dillon and award a contract for the storm sewer cleaning and inspection project in the amount of $293,398, with an additional authorization of $29,342 for contingencies, for a total contract award of $322,740.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was deferred at our last meeting, and I think that staff did put together a report back. And maybe if I could turn it over to Director Powers, just to quickly walk through that, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Council. Again, there is a very detailed report back that provides background relative to this contract, it being a routine contract, how it's put together, how we try to be contiguous relative to work. Going back to the point the manager made, I think, briefly earlier, infrastructure is not cheap. So, we learned with sidewalks and any number of other programs where we try to bundle, excuse me, bundles not the right word. We tried to do things geographically, continuously, so that we get a more favorable bid response. So, hence, we move this contract or this effort around the city annually. And invariably, it ends up in all districts. This year, it happens to be in two, three, and four. Next year, it will include one and five. And years out, it will, again, rotate, and then we have the city on a 10-year cycle. I could go very deep into this and just say, okay, some of what we're actually doing is televising along with cleaning, which is actually establishing within the stormwater utility where this is buried. Again, this is some old infrastructure in some cases, where we don't even know just the condition, but where it exists. So, this is an effort that is going through, again, a cyclic, herciclic type event. I believe, again, the report back explains what's there. We've also explained what GPSD is doing within the first district. I would also state that the lion's share of a $100 million effort over the next 16 years is taking place within the first district. Next year alone, we're spending $22.5 million in infrastructure improvements alone, just infrastructure in the first district. So, I believe this is well represented overall in what is good for the city. I think the contract rotates the correct way. And I guess, last, I would add that the time sensitivity of this is the bid opening was 21 November and expires 60 days thereafter, meaning we have till the 21st, which this is our last opportunity. I'll stand by for any other questions we may have, but I think, I hope we've answered your concerns.
Thank you, Director Powers. We have Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a point of clarification. Did I just hear you say that the schedule would include, for this, this work would include District One next year?
Yes, District Two and N5, which are not in this year.
Okay. That was the question I needed some clarification on. And, you know, as I mentioned in the meeting, that, you know, some of our older neighborhoods are probably in worse shape. And I know that we've got the CSO work going on, but mind you, we probably would not have the CSO work going on had the federal government not told us to do it, okay? So, I appreciate your information, and I appreciate all the hard work that you all are doing. I just wanted to make sure that, given this 10-year cycle, you know, we wouldn't be at the back end of it, because we've got deteriorating infrastructure, probably some of the worst in the city in District One. So, I appreciate your providing the information. And with that, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve Item Number twenty-three, three ninety-nine. There were some more questions, Councilmember?
No. Well, there may be one, but, yes. Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question, Mr. Manager. This contract won the healthiest fund we have, or pot of money, is our stormwater utility fee. Why are we not using stormwater utility fee to pay for this contract instead of the CIP?
This is, if I, I think what, as it's written, it's coming out of the community investment plan. We budget for that there, but I think this is coming out of the stormwater utility fund.
It is coming out of the stormwater utility fund. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, you're welcome. I don't see any more questions. Need a motion to approve? A move by Councilmember Grab, seconded by, oh, you already, you already made the motion. Motion was made by Councilmember Jackson, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Discussion is over. Please cash your ballots. Councilmember Velpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Powers. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash three ninety-five is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to continue the discussion on short-term rental regulations.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point, I think I'll turn it over to either the Corporation Council or Assistant Community Development Director to kind of give us kind of a refresher about where we are, and then it's probably more a discussion amongst the council.
Okay.
I'll start. We had some additional questions last time we were together, and Attorney Perkins was unavailable tonight, so I'm pinch-hitting. So, we look at some of the other jurisdictions downstate regarding short-term rentals and how they deal with it. They, as the exhibit shows, they regulate through licensing, sort of a different approach than we take primarily. And so, their license regulations are a little different, but they kind of achieve some of the same purposes. I think Springfield is a good place to tell you about how they regulate the license. You can get a license for a short-term rental in Springfield, but you can only have 95 days of rented property unless the owner is present. And so, similar to our approach, where we allow permitted use, by permitted use, the zoning if the owner's going to be present on the premises. So, they take a slightly different approach to that. If you, in Springfield, for instance, through their regulations, you can license a property for more rentals when the owner isn't present, but only in certain types of zoning districts. For instance, in a multifamily district, you can have a maximum of two adults per unit for an unlimited amount of time if the owner isn't present. But again, only in a multifamily area. And it limits the occupancy to two. And finally, if you want to have a larger place than that, you have to be in a commercial zoning district. And so, there's a lot of different approaches to allowing these uses that slightly differ from ours, so it's tough to do apples-to-apples type comparison. But all of the communities have some level, that we've seen of these communities, the larger ones, have some level of at least tax, and most of them have regulations. And when they struggle, for instance, in Decatur, they have a few places that were causing issues. And so, they regulate the disruptive contact through their licensure. So, you have to be licensed, and you have to pay the tax. And if there's disruptive events, then that license can be revoked. And so, we're seeing a number of different ways to address some of the issues here. In Decatur, like here, they were careful to express, hey, we don't have a lot of disruptive events at Airbnbs, but when there are, we have a strong tool to deal with that. I point out the case that we summarized, which was Wertham versus Village of Barrington Hills. And that case stands for the Illinois courts passing on a jurisdiction saying, we're not going to allow this use in our residentially zoned districts at all. And they were sued over that. People felt it was overly restrictive. It violated their property rights. They raised all these issues about, hey, this is, this is an inappropriate extension of government to say we can't have this type of a short-term rental in a residential zone. The Illinois courts found, no, that it's completely appropriate for a community to decide through their elected officials that that commercial use of a residential dwelling is inappropriate for their community and to ban it entirely. So, through our discussions here, we've tried to point out some ways that the council might further limit than it already does the use of property for short-term rentals. Whether this council decides to further limit that or to expand the ability to use it, that's up to the council to decide. One area that we are urging the council to take action on, not tonight, but that the tools to deal with disruptive outcomes, we'd like them to be strengthened. And those are detailed in the reports before you. So, if the council's ambition is to say, we want to further limit the use of short-term rentals, we have provided some tools that are consistent with our existing tools that would further limit those. We've discussed those previously, the going from a quarter-mile area to a half-mile area, and going from 3% within the quarter-mile to 1% within the half-mile. And also, a distance setback of 1,500 feet from use to use. This would apply to the special use permit facilities where the owners are not present. We haven't had a single disruptive event at one of these facilities where the owners are present. Just so that you know, there's 35 short-term rentals right now under permitted use where the owners are present on the property, and 46 that we've approved by special use. We've included some maps that show where these are, and some of the proximity issues have been displayed, so that you know that going forward, kind of how that will work. I don't know what, if any, additional questions you have, but staff's question to council is, shall we adjust our current regulations about where we allow special uses for short-term rentals by way of either the change to the percentage and the distance setback? And if we shall, then we'd like to go forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission and get that recommendation back in front of council. Regardless of whether we do that, your staff is asking you, I am asking you, please strengthen our tools to deal with the disruptive events, so that we can be responsive when you're asked by constituents to be responsive to this set of issues. I wouldn't be so concerned with that, except that we have presented some materials where the Airbnb entity itself is addressing these disruptive method, or parties that might occur on their properties, and strengthening their tools to deal with these events. Now, one of the marketing, other marketing platforms for this, VRBO, has a whole set of issues that relate to, if you want to have an event on the premises, when you book that, you have to go through a whole different series of regulations. So, both of the main platforms, there's other ones, but VRBO and Airbnb are dealing in different ways, but they're dealing with these disruptive events that can occur when people want to have a social event at one of these places where the owner isn't present. And so, our ask to the council is, whether council directs us to further restrict where these short-term rentals can be within our community, whether council directs us to do that or not, we still would like council to consider staff's whether council directs us to do that or not, we still would like council to consider staff's suggestions with regard to the tools we have available to deal with disruptive events. And now the ball's in your court. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll start with a couple of questions, uh, for you, council. Uh, so, first question is, staff is not recommending the removal or elimination of... Uh, what's the terminology? Special use. Staff is not recommending the elimination of special use approval by council in exchange for approval through an administrative process. Is that correct?
That's correct. We think that, given the discussion of council, that there was, from what we're able to divine from that, that there is not a consensus that we ought to convert all of these to permitted uses. That council still wants to weigh in, although there's a divide, clearly, amongst the council members. It seems to me that there isn't an appetite for that. If I am mistaken...
That's my, that, that was my perception?
To be corrected.
Yes.
That is certainly an option that we have described for the council, that's available to them if they choose that.
Okay.
Um, that was, one of the first inputs we got was, "How could we, how could council maybe not deal with these things?" We answered that question.
Sure. Okay, so that's not a current staff recommendation?
Correct.
Okay. Second question is, uh, should council adopt that one, two, and three, reducing the cap, from three percent to one percent, increasing the cap radius from point-two-five mile to point-five-oh, half a mile? And then requiring the fifteen-hundred-foot separation? How does that impact the existing approved, uh, STRs?
The short-term rentals that are approved by special use currently would continue in operation even if they technically violate this section.
Okay. Okay.
Unless and until there is a change of ownership. On change of ownership, people have to reapply, the next owner, if they want to continue that use, has to apply
Right.
for that use to be extended to them as the new owner. If that violate, if those setbacks are violated there, that new owner could approach the council with a request for a waiver. That would go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, just like a special use permit does.
Okay.
And they'd provide a recommendation to the council on whether to grant or deny the waiver.
Okay.
I would imagine that a well-conducted special use in a neighborhood where there wasn't an outcry from the neighbors, we might be, uh, inclined to entertain as a governing body that sort of a waiver. But, uh, that's up for future councils to determine whether that waiver would be extended or not.
Okay.
In that regard, the continuing uses would continue under present ownership, but they would perhaps be at jeopardy of not getting a new special use on change of ownership.
Okay. You answered my questions. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Uh, just a question for clarification, because, um, I was, what, it, it sounded like two different things. Like, one, are we having discussion about the recommendations? And/or do you want us to talk about discussion regarding how to handle the disruption, disruptions? So I have suggestions for disruptions.
So, yes, um, we need direction on whether to change our zoning ordinance from the council to go to Planning and Zoning Commission and seek the changes that council wants us to pursue. Staff's made recommendations of what those changes would be based on all the inputs we've received. Some council members might not like the changes that staff's recommending, but we've tried to put together as best we can what the middle is on those zoning regulations. The other tools about dealing with disruptive matters, staff's asking you to grant us those tool improvements so that if there's disruptive events in the future, we can have a reliable, uh, predictable outcome if we're seeking enforcement. So we are asking for both, but timing-wise, we need direction on the zoning changes so we can go through planning. And I would like, if you would indulge us, to come back to you with that recommendation from Planning and Zoning with the suggestions for the changes as far as the regulatory tools at that time.
Sure.
Because depending on what the recommendations are out of Planning and Zoning, we might have to shift or modify those, those, uh, tools. Thanks.
Thank you. So when you go to Planning and Zoning, is, I mean, would there be any kind of public hearing related to those changes? It would be, happen at Planning and Zoning, not here, then? Okay, got it. Uh, Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Um, can you address, are there actual changes in here regarding current actively-used short-term rentals? Because it seems like all of the discussion has been around making it more difficult to get one, more restrictive, not really addressing the real problem that I hear being talked about, which is some that are non-compliant.
Um, the changes that are detailed in the report, in the code section, deal with existing uses and how the, how staff can process a revocation of an existing special use permit. Those are the enforcement tools we're asking for to be improved, so we have a more predictable outcome. And so if you look at the, at the, uh, starting on page three of the report, it details the license regulations, and we've included the current regulations, uh, along with the suggested modifications. And so those, um, the deletions would be the stricken language, and the, um, and the underlying language is additional. One area where I'd point out to you is, um, when originally adopted, it would allow up to four valid complaints received on any one property within a six-month timeframe. I think we need a stronger tool. And so we're asking to allow staff to have the discretion to process a revocation on a single disruptive event. Whether we do that or not, albeit what, um, uh, Councilman Vespa's currently nodding his head, we would exercise some prosecutorial discretion here about when that would be appropriate or not. And so, that would give staff a tool, and the idea is to get complaints amongst a large group of licensed entities with a very strong tool for staff, to have the credibility to approach them and say, "If this happens, we can revoke your special use permit." Or perhaps, if it was not a terribly disruptive event, staff's determined that if there's any repeat of this, we have the ability to revoke it. But you give that discretion to your staff, so we have the ability to negate these episodes right away.
I, I totally support that. It is, that, most of the conversation has centered around making it more restricted to even get one, not about actually addressing the problem that I hear being brought to a front. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Ma- thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I was going to address that same language. I think, I think it's very good language. Yeah, originally, it said you needed four valid complaints, uh, regarding any one property within a six-month timeframe. Uh, so you know, the question would be, what constitutes a valid complaint? Now, it just says, or the proposed change, uh, would say that you need any complaint received regarding any one property. So that, that gives us a lot of discretion. You know, there are some times where, you know, um, there could be damage to a, a neighbor's property. You know, there could be a very big event, so, you know, maybe one strike is enough. Um, I do like that. Just wanted to put that out there. I think these are, you know, it's a good enforcement mechanism. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I believe we had a great discussion last meeting and, and will be again tonight. Um, these, the work we're doing, I believe, is man-made, which means it will not be perfect. But I believe what we have in, in front of us, it's definitely a huge improvement to what we had before. So I want to say, number one, and, and we all have different management style, all of us do. I'm not a micromanager, and some of us, or some of you guys are micromanagers. Okay, but to me, it's not, doesn't mean that we need to insult one another, we just need to accept different styles. So, and not being a micromanager doesn't mean that you're not accepting your responsibilities as a councilman. So, what I'm going to do tonight, I'm going to be, uh, making, I'd like to make a motion, similar motion to the last one, but I won't add the, the, the staff. I mean, I believe in our staff, Joe, Leah, uh, we have qualified, qualified staff. They're, they're making, they know their job, and, and as a manager, um, I like to give responsibility to the people I paid, and people that aren't a team, I let them do their job, basically. So that's why I made my motion the way I did it last time, but obviously, uh, the majority did not like that. But I'd like to make a motion right now that, uh, we move to accept the three original recommendations from the staff, and then we, uh, accept the improvement for the, the strength of, uh, of, uh, of the rules that they want to, to start. So, uh, this would be my motion, and just leave it at that for now, and hopefully, most of people will agree around the horseshoe, uh, to that, that, that motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Uh, let's continue the discussion. Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, I think that we have learned a lot over the last, um, well, we've been doing this now. I think this goes back a few years, actually, because I know that short-term rentals have been along even before they, we had an ordinance. But I do commend the, the work of the staff. Uh, just a clarifying question, and you may have this, uh, Information Assistant Director Allison, I meant to reach out to you before. Do we have any current neighborhoods that are at the three percent threshold per our current ordinance?
I do believe we have just a few that may have met their, their maximum allowed. Not a lot, but, but a few, I think, have, they didn't have a, a large number to allow them to begin with.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I, that was something I just wanted to ask, is to be mindful, because I can see some, um, some, some apprehension there of, uh, you all changed the ordinance now. We already got our three percent max, and so just kind of being, being mindful. Um, obviously, we, you know, whoever's approved, if this passes tonight, will be grandfathered in. But just something to be mindful in how we want to maybe communicate with them, um, and just be empathetic and, and understanding, um, to maybe some of their concerns. Uh, I do appreciate, uh, Councilman Seer's, uh, motion, and I think that, uh, the work that you all have done is a, a good, happy median of, you know, respecting, uh, our, our residents that are making the biggest investment that most people do, and that's homeownership, uh, while also to respecting those who, uh, want to pursue this as a, uh, as a business opportunity as well, too. And so we'll continue to keep learning and growing from it, and hopefully, our, our residents understand and our citizens understand that we're not perfect, and just have patience and give us grace as we continue to keep navigating this. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Allen, and just in follow-up to his question, how would we handle those that are in the queue? Or how would you recommend we handle those? How, how many do you think they are, uh, Director Allison?
Well, so there, um, I believe you'll have, you'll have one more short-term rental to review at your next meeting.
Okay.
The, um, February Planning and Zoning Commission agenda has, uh, I believe, one queuing in to that.
Okay.
So there may be, there's certainly one more coming, possibly two, before regulations could be modified.
Okay. So there's potentially three, one that's coming?
Two, total two.
Total two, not total three?
Yeah.
Total two. So how would you recommend that we handle that? That they, they would operate under the existing rules, not under the change rules?
Correct.
Corporation Council, you have a comment, too?
No, it's common to think that a moratorium solves the issue, but it causes more problems than it solves. I think our current regulations should be in place until you change them, and we can deal with that.
Say that again, our, our current?
Our current regulations will be enforced until and unless they're changed. And we, I'm suggesting we not engage in a moratorium in the interim.
Okay.
It causes more issues than it solves in our...
Okay, and it takes a little while to, for the change to kick in?
Right.
Okay. Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I appreciate Councilman Seer's motion, and I think those three recommendations from staff that we had a month ago are, are logical and a good way to begin to get a little more, um, restrictive, let's be honest, um, with, with the process. Corporation Council, you mentioned the disruptive events, and, and on page four, as has been pointed out, um, the license can be revoked or suspended for any complaints received. How long does that process take, from the time that that, that complaint is officially registered with the police department, with community development, with your office? How long would that process take before that license is actually revoked?
So I'm most comfortable if there's an actual violation, and we deal with that in our administrative process, which generally takes about sixty days to get through to a hearing.
So the...
And then, and then after that administrative hearing is completed, there's a period of time where that could be reviewed under administrative review law. So if we get to the point where we get an outcome, and, um, there's no appeal of that through the administrative review law, that's another thirty-five days, then we would process the revocation by sending a letter saying it's revoked. So I've described a period of time that's ninety-five days long. There's a couple mailing periods in there that might make it a little longer or shorter. And so, from the event to that outcome, somewhere around ninety to a hundred days.
And the operator, could the license be suspended during that timeframe? Or would they be allowed to continue renting it for that hundred-day timeframe?
So I think going forward in the administration of this, because the tool's so strong, there'll be incidents where we, staff might, might decide to do a suspension and have the individual suffer some period of suspension rather than revocation. Uh, I think that would be a negotiated outcome, and that could take effect rather immediately. Or we might determine at that ninetieth day, rather than to revoke, to say that your license is going to be suspended for ninety days, or six months, or a year, um, so that we can, you know, uh, penalize the conduct without absolutely taking away the right. Staff makes these kinds of decisions in other, you know, all the time, and those are the kinds of decisions that you would see us making in the future.
As a man of faith, I believe in grace, and, um, the concept of one and done is a little bit harsh. But after seeing some of the egregious actions that we've seen in our neighborhoods, I think one and done is an appropriate response, so I would encourage you to make that revocation as strong and clear and forceful to all operators as possible. And if there's a way to suspend their ability while the process is working out, and I'm no attorney, but, um, I'm a neighborhood representative, and that would clearly be something that I would like to explore to the fullest extent of the law. Um, after last council meeting, I had made the comment that we had only had one or two complaints, while, I've been informed by residents that there've been issues, and I've seen video, and I've seen text messages sent to the operator of the Airbnb. I'm pleading for help with nothing being done. I'm like, "Why didn't you call the police?" Well, you guys didn't listen to us when we said we didn't want it, so why would you listen to us now? Kind of a, a slam, I think, to our enforcement process. But I'm telling you that story to let you know that there are more incidents out there than are called into the police. And I can't quantify that, but I know firsthand from my residents, and the third district has a fair share of these, that, that is happening. Um, I would be curious, um, Corporation Council, if you could talk a little more on the VRBO event regulations? Because that, that's intriguing to me, because if, if VRBO is making it clear that this is for single-family usage or six-adult usage, and you want to have, but you want to have a family reunion, you, you need to go through some other hoops? Is that what I understood you saying?
Right, uh, so VRBO has more of a week-long vacation model or longer. They typically are dealing with situations where the owner is not on premises. It's one of their main marketing points. Uh, they are in the vacation home business as opposed to a... They are in the vacation home business as opposed to a weekender-type thing. And so some of those venues are very lovely, large, and places where you would naturally perhaps want to have an event, a party, that type of thing, and gathering. And VRBO has some regulations, insurance requirements, things like that. So I think they cautiously engage in that with a structure that allows them to predict a successful event without a lot of disruption outside of the property. And so it's not like they're marketing, you know, the equivalent of Animal House. They're renting out ski-in, ski-out facilities, and vacation homes on lakes, and things like that, where they're built for entertainment. And they expect that, and they can support that in a way that doesn't, isn't disruptive to the neighborhood progress.
Would that be a stipulation we could add to our process that you can't? You know, we limit the number of people that can stay there, four people, six people, I think as many as 10 in some instances, but is there a way for us to say that no congregationing, congregants, you know? Would that be something we could look at?
We're going to be enforcing the occupancy limits, and that's how we're going to negate gatherings. And because the predominant area in Peoria, where the VRBO, or where these facilities are, are adjacent to or near other residences, we're not going to be initially encouraging any kind of gatherings beyond the individuals that are renting the place. So I don't think we're going to flip to that VRBO model right away. I think if we got there, we'd probably come back with some kind of idea about, in some of our, in the downtown footprint, the forum districts perhaps, where we're more in an entertainment district, that type of thing, that we might entertain it. But I don't think our neighborhoods would support that right now. If that's a direction from council, we could...
I mean that to prohibit it.
Yeah. Right now, it's my view that our ordinance, the way that we've adjusted it, we're going to be able to address that.
Who will be enforcing the occupancy limit? Would that be based on complaint-driven?
Anything else, it's going to be based on complaint. We don't have the capacity to be vigilant on all these sites when there's, you know, a rental. But on complaint, one of the tools that we're going to provide to our law enforcement folks is all the roster of the short-term rental places, all the contact information, and have that briefed up on the fact that they're to, you know, write reports so that we can process through Leah's department the violations of the different codes and things, including an over-occupancy ticket, if that's the method we're going to use to create the violation. And then off the back of that, we'll do the revocations or suspensions.
As we've been talking about this specifically since the last meeting, I've given a lot of thought to some of the comments about the special use process that were made, because Councilman Sears' original motion was to make all Airbnbs permitted uses, as I recall. And there was a number of council members who spoke up, saying we need to be more respectful of the neighborhoods and listen to what they say. Well, that really struck me, and I had to stop and think about the neighborhoods that I have been contacted by. There's three major homeowner associations in the third district, which all have or in the process of amending their bylaws to prohibit Airbnb short-term rentals, excuse me, in their subdivisions. There's a number of neighborhood associations and neighborhoods that don't have HOAs, so they don't have that option. I wonder how many of us, and I'm looking at myself, who vote for these consistently, does your HOA prohibit them? I think it's important for us to realize, I have not had one call, we've approved 46 of these, I don't think I've had one neighborhood association or HOA call me and say, you know what, we can't wait for this Airbnb to open. They have been consistent voice against it. As we look at becoming more restrictive, I'm going to support the motion on the floor tonight and want that to go through. I think we need to take a hard look at whether or not we continue to allow these to be in the R2, R3, and R4 single-family neighborhoods. And that's a 180 for me, I'll admit it, but hearing what my colleagues said about listening to the neighborhoods, hearing what my neighborhoods have been telling me, I think that's something that we need to consider. Not tonight, not at the next planning and zoning commission. We're making some changes, we're increasing enforcement, maybe that will be enough to deter it. But I want to put that out there, that that is our nuclear option, ladies and gentlemen, and I don't think we should say no to that. I think we need to leave that card on the table and see how this plays out, because it's clear that the neighborhood folks don't want it. I'd like to hear anybody disagree with that. And Corporation council, one last question, and I'll wrap it up here, I promise. I do need to get a little clarification on what was talked about, business opportunities. And you referenced these Airbnbs are a business, and I'm sorry I keep saying Airbnb, these short-term rentals are a business. What was the lawsuit that you referenced that a municipality tried to restrict it, and then they were sued over property rights?
Right. In the council communications, we detailed the Wertham versus Village of Barrington Hills. Ultimately, Barrington Hills was successful in defending their absolute ban of short-term rentals in the residential areas. And so, you know, that's at least one example of the extreme on regulation versus the extreme on permissiveness that we've tried to express to council. You have a wide lane here to develop what level of regulation, restrictive or permissive, you want to strike for the city of Peoria. So that was there to just at least support that you have this ability to regulate here and to prohibit, if you choose to.
And that was upheld by the appellate court?
Yes.
And for those that say we're taking away the rights of the property owner, frankly, doesn't government do that frequently?
Well, you know, cities themselves, municipalities, are all an organization of regulations and restrictions on other people's rights, so that everybody can get together and live close proximity to one another and thrive. So, you know, there's government regulation, you know, the citizens have formed us to codify these rules. We all get along. Good fences make good neighbors, that kind of stuff. So there's no problem with the regulation. And this regulation, this court dealt with constitutional and property rights challenges to this absolute ban, and said that's within the discretion of the city council. That's their determination, that this commercial use in a residential setting was not appropriate. And the court agreed that that's fine. So that is an option this council has, and any council has.
And the court considered that a commercial use?
Right.
In a residential neighborhood?
Right. And I think that this, I think our zoning officer would agree, that this is the commercial use of a residential, residentially-zoned parcel. It's not, you know, inherently illicit to allow that, but it's within your authority to prohibit that.
Something to think about. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grab?
Members, I think something happened. Somehow, this nameplate went over there.
Yeah, seems like it. It sure seems like it.
You know, I have the greatest respect for Councilman Regenbach and all of my colleagues, and the one thing that I wanted to come out of this meeting tonight was, basically, we don't upend special use process with the final okay coming from the elected leadership.
Yes.
That's what I really wanted to have come out of it. We have many more good things, I think, that have come out of it, and I appreciate the teamwork on this. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Corporate Council Hayes, I think you may have touched on it. One of the suggestions I was going to make regarding the disruptive behavior was that we get those STRs addressed, and owners, as well as their contact information in the CAS system. And of course, that'll be working with Director Blaney. That is something that could be done tonight. But just like with all businesses, the owner or the contact information is always in that system, so if there's any incident that police, fire, or any, you know, related entity have with that particular place, they can contact someone. And I'm saying this to say that if we have that system in place, then perhaps there won't be three days of disruptions. That owner would have been notified day one that there's been a violation, because I imagine they have that clause perhaps in their contract. So again, if that's not in place, that's something that we can consider, because how will they know that there's been an incident? Why does it happen two, three days in a row? That's one way to curtail that, and that can be done immediately.
We'll take action on that tomorrow. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There's one more light. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Just some clarification, council. We have a maximum of six adults. That's also restricted by the amount of bedroom square footage. Is that correct, under our zoning regulations?
I need to phone a friend here.
That is correct, sir. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We have a short-term rental that applies. Are we aware of that square footage within that property?
When we review applications and through that process, yes, we do inspections, and we ask for square footage of bedrooms.
Okay, so...
Absolutely.
That's great. Thank you very much. And I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay. You didn't know you were going to get a vote out of this tonight, but it looks like there's going to be a vote on this tonight. If there's no more questions, we have a motion made by Councilmember Sears. Can you repeat that motion?
Yes. My motion was to accept the original recommendation from the staff, number one, two, and three, and also accept the, I don't know how to say it, the new rules to strengthen our rules, I guess.
Tools?
Or tools, yeah, to strengthen our tools. Thank you.
Okay, and it was seconded by Councilmember Euler. Looks like no more discussion. Please cast your ballot.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Just for clarification.
Oh, you need a clarification?
Do we consider the tool changes, license regulation changes, to be a first reading? We'll come back with that ordinance when we have the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
I'll change my motion to accept. Thank you.
The three. Okay. Councilmember Grab?
Mayor, just one clarification. Encapsulated in that motion is an understanding that we would continue with the special use permit. Thank you.
Yes, we would. And then also, those two in the queue will be treated under the old rules?
Right.
Right, okay. All right. You got all that, Madam Clerk?
I think so.
Okay. I don't know how you keep up, honestly.
Challenged sometimes.
Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Velpula?
Aye.
He say yes?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Good. All right. Keep us going, Madam Clerk.
Okay. The next two items are out of order as to what is customary, so I ask that we go ahead and do new business before we have citizens' opportunity to address the council.
Okay. Well, I'm going to ask under new business that we, that Director Powers, that you come up and give us an update on our snow event.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And council, we're actually, believe it or not, into the fourth event of this year, of this winter. We've been in skirmishes. Most of you know I'm an over-tough jar, so it's like, kind of equate snow fighting to war, battlefields in fog. This event in particular is not over. So I don't want anyone confident, for those listening, and for you and your families, and anybody that does hear me, this event has been snowing all day, but the temperature's been above freezing, so the ground temperature. And I'll give you a little, every storm has its own characteristics. We've been through this before. But because that's happened, we've had a very high melt rate, meaning on the streets, off the streets, you've seen slush. We've been plowing and moving that snow as it falls off the streets. Now, what you're seeing is actually running water, I mean, literally, off of the unpaved areas, onto the paved areas into storm systems and the pavement. The temperature's not going to go below freezing tonight until about 4:00 a.m., which means we would be prime right before rush hour tomorrow for a possible surface freeze event. Definitely overpasses bridges. Exercise extreme caution in the morning. We will be using material, keeping in mind that we haven't been using salt, because literally water is flowing across the road, because this has been a continuous snow and melt event, with the danger lurking in the morning. And if I'm overstating this event, I hope so, because if it saves someone life, staying off of ice, which the best thing for all of us to do, to include snowplows, is to stay off of ice, because it's dangerous. It just is the most dangerous event that you can have relative to Midwest winters. So that is for this event, and that's where we are now. Our staff is out, they're in neighborhoods, we're back in arterials again. It's snowing now, it's 34 degrees. So again, this is continuing and will continue throughout the night. We will be on the streets throughout the night. And then at the end of this, as we conclude and get through this, and we will, we have a great staff, but as I have said, and coming from the tip of Lake Michigan before I came here, weather can win, and it can win in a little way or a very big way. So we are prepared, we are ready. I just want everyone who can hear me to be ready in the morning for what we don't know. We hope that we come through this okay, that it's a relatively short event, that the daylight helps us as the sun rises, and the materials will work, but expect a slick condition tomorrow morning for rush hour. Then moving to the event that the manager noted earlier that may interfere with the legislative practice. That will be the first event of the season where Thursday night, our temperatures will be below freezing when the event starts. Right now, we're looking at a possibility of one to three inches overnight, Thursday night, and then five to eight on top of that all-day Friday, an additional one to three Friday night. If that happens, that means we will be in a battle from Thursday night through Friday night, fighting over a foot of snow collectively, with temperatures below freezing throughout the event. So that will be an all-out war. We will get to the neighborhoods when we can, and again, we know that there is the two-inch point. We will far exceed that. It will likely delay us getting there, but we will get there. And again, so I can't reinforce enough, please stay off the emergency snow routes as far as parking. I will be communicating with the manager relative to if we need to expand that. I don't believe we will. It is going to be a snow event. It's not, it's unique, but it's snow, and it's going to be cold. And then it's going to get real cold. So I really just wanted to speak to the council, to anybody that, again, might be listening, watching me, just please be careful and exercise caution for the remainder of this evening and then as coming up, hopefully, the characteristics of this storm change, because they can. But we are expecting a big one. So thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you for the update, and thank you for all your work in keeping... Thank you for the update, and thank you for all your work in keeping us safe, keeping the roads clean, and you and your entire team, Director Powers.
Thank you.
So, Manager, this is why we're worried about Friday's legislative breakfast. Friday could be six to eight inches. Ouch. Okay. We'll know on Thursday what the decision is. Okay. But it's going to be on either way, if we're either going to be in person or we're going to be virtual. Okay. Any other new business? Councilmember Rigenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two quick things. Director Doolan, I would like to get a little information on how the city of Peoria deals with little houses. I've had a number of people approach me about them recently, just doing a general inquiry. And if you could tell us, if we have any policy in place, where they would be allowed, what other cities have done, if you could just get us a little information on little houses. And then, second of all, I received a phone call from Mr. Bullock's colleague at the Journal Star, asking me about victim advocacy, excuse me, victim advocacy program, if the city has anything like that. There was a shooting on, in the East Bluff back in October, and an elderly woman and her daughter and granddaughter were coming out of their house and witnessed it. And the police responded appropriately, they did everything they were supposed to, secured the area, and there was no harm done to this resident or her family, but they were clearly emotionally traumatized. And after talking with the chief, that's not something that we've had in Peoria in the past, but with our co-response model coming online here, I've asked him to talk about, or I've, we've talked about that, and Chief, perhaps you want to just give us an update about the director coming on later this month, and that this is, in a roundabout way, the kind of thing that that co-response model will be also dealing with, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, good evening. So as of January 22nd, the director for the Social Services Unit will start. We have, Carl Health has put out the opening for the social workers, so we're looking for those social workers and the applications. I don't know how many we've gotten up to this point. But starting January 22nd, we'll start the build-out of the Wisconsin substation, get everything prepared, hire the social workers, and that's exactly what the social workers will be doing, is dealing with victims of crimes.
It's going to be referred to as the Social Service Division? Is that what you
Services Unit at this point.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to express this publicly, because this woman was, like I said, traumatized by it, reached out to the Journal Star, so there might be some follow-ups. So I just wanted my colleagues to know about this, and that I did speak with her personally this afternoon. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. New business? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor, of tonight, and Mr. Manager, for great discussion on STR. In the near future, I'd love to put on the agenda or just have conversation amongst ourselves. I know STR is not the only solution, but, no, when I look at what's happening in Peoria, I'm talking about positive thing, like the growth, the business growth with Maui Jim Carrying and the Cancer Center and NFW, and, I mean, there's going to be a lot of, and we have a group of people, business people, that were here a few months ago, make a presentation about how to keep the talent in Peoria and how to attract talent in Peoria. I'd love to have a conversation with people, how are we going to generate labor for all these companies, if it does happen, and also housing for all these people. So, and I know STR is not the solution for all, but, I mean, to me, I use STRs and I'm okay with them. So, anyway, maybe we can talk about that in the future, and any of my colleagues, if you have any ideas about all the growth that hopefully will happen in Peoria in the next few years, how are we going to get housing for hopefully all these new people coming to Peoria? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilmember Gordon Young?
I just wanted to follow up to Councilmember Rigenbach's question. Remember, you have a mental health professional, the council, call me. And we do have resources in this community, and we can talk offline.
Good point.
Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Did you have a new business? Okay. All right, I think we're ready to move on.
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and I believe we had one card.
We have one, we have Jess Man, or Jess Hill. Jess?
Hello, Mayor Dr. Ali, and the city council in the horseshoe. I'm Jess Man Hill of the Central Illinois Homeschoolers Resource Guide, or CIHRG for short. I'm here tonight to invite all of you, including those who are tuning in at home, to the Illinois Music Educators Association Conference, and that is in two weeks from today, January 24th to 27th. I believe the first three days are for the educators and the students only, and Saturday, the 27th of January, is for the general public. There will be clinics, concerts, vendors, and companies, and universities that offer, I guess, music education and really cool marching bands and whatnot. They might even have recruiters from, say, Drum Corps International or some other organization for kids to get away from this summer, because there's more out there besides Peoria. You know, get out and explore.
And Jess, this is at the Peoria Civic Center?
Yes, Civic Center.
Thank you very much.
And P.S., the new school year edition of my resource guide, I'm working on the rough draft right now, and I plan to secure some funds to get it printed and distributed before the beginning of the new school year.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we are adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Valpula? Did he say something? Motion carries. Thank you for your service.